All right, at this time, we'd like to reconvene the meeting. Could everybody please stand for the Pledge Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag. All right, we'll begin the meeting by approving our agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda. Phil, second to Carrie, any discussion? All in favor? And opposed? Thank you. On to public comment. Just a little brief segue into how public comment is handled. In the future, I'm hoping to have these on the back of the agenda, so I don't have to read it anymore. Okay? So, it'll be a guideline for public comment. Reminder, this is a meeting that's held in public according to open meetings laws, not a public participation meeting. As a board, we value input from the public. In order to address your comments, questions, more efficiently, we would encourage you to use the district protocol for resolving concerns instead of waiting for a Board of Education meeting. Some examples of that might be, just go to the source closest to the issue you're trying to deal with, or handle, or even a thank you. You would call the teacher first, or set up an email, or a conference. You could go to the department chair next, then you would look for the principals or assistant principals, then the superintendent or assistant superintendents, and if you contact the board, just be advised that we do share everything that we receive with each other. That's how we're supposed to handle, do business. We can only act as a board of nine, not, nobody can do anything singularly. All right? And the sign-up procedures, you need to be calling the district clerk before the meeting, and up to 20 minutes before you can sign up here. Okay? The rest of my public comment information is I will call speakers who have signed up. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to talk. All speakers must adhere to this timeframe. At the three-minute mark, we will politely thank you for your comments. Speakers cannot to further time slots to another person. Also, speakers are asked to refrain from discussing matters that involve district personnel and/or a particular student's record. School staff and students should not be named during public comment. Speakers are also asked to avoid repetitive comments. All remarks should be addressed to the Board of Education directly. Community members are able to ask board members questions. However, community members should know that the board members will not engage in conversation or answer questions during this portion of the meeting. The Board of Education will provide responses to questions in one of three ways: on its webpage, directly to individuals through a phone call or a written letter, or to the public in future meetings. A copy of all written correspondence should be given to the board clerk before the end of the Board of Education meeting. After I've called on those who have signed up to speak, please come to the front table, microphone, state your name and address for the board clerk's record, and I will start calling people up at this time. Okay?
Hello, Board. I'm Daniel Wood, 4309 West Walworth Road. It has been a couple of months since I've spoken, I felt like giving an update to you. The last time I spoke, I talked about busing and how bad I thought it looked during those first couple of days. Since then, I've been back a handful of times to watch the routine that has occurred during the morning drop-off at WE and WP. The morning bus route for my child is somewhat stabilized, going from 42 minutes door-to-door to around 34 minutes. Nothing like their five-minute commute to Freewill, but all things given, I can't complain too much, though I'll try. Some things that I've noticed in the morning are as follows: the first bus is at WP by 8:20. Both schools basically open their doors around 8:30, and by that time, about a dozen buses are there. By 8:35, most buses are transitioning between the school, which is a semi-controlled chaos once you throw the WP parents into the mix. Last week, WP parents couldn't even get out of the parking lot because the buses were backed up so far that they couldn't even get out of that front parking lot. There are typically two to three buses that show up after 8:35. My child's bus is one of them. Overall, there's a 20-minute window between the first bus to the last bus showing up at the campus. Many buses are less than 50 percent filled. One small bus has one child on it, and one big bus also only has one child on it. Meanwhile, my child's bus and at least one or two others are almost completely full. I understand staggering buses, but when I look at the times between the first bus and the last bus, which is about 20 minutes, and seeing that at least half a dozen buses are almost empty, makes me question why my kid's bus is always packed, almost always the last one, with my children being the last ones to enter school while other kids have been there for 15 to 20 minutes. I see a lot of wasted time. Wasted time that a certain teacher warned you guys about over a year ago in the pack, stating that our kids will lose at least five minutes in the morning and five in the afternoon, which equates to days of lost education for all Wayne Elementary and Primary kids. I urge you to communicate and hold the administration accountable for specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely goals to improve busing for our children. I see growth, but I equate that to the bus driver's ability to memorize routes and eliminate wasted time where possible. I still see many inefficiencies and improvements that could be made possible by changing current Last year, the administration sold you, the board, on an ideology that they were going to bring over traditions and curriculum from Freewill. One such class was forest school. It was a weekly program that let kids learn while being outdoors. We were told that our first grader would be given this opportunity again this year. We received letters at the beginning of the school year, and our daughter has had two classes so far. We started noticing that even on days where the weather was good, she did not participate in forest school. We found out later, just a couple of weeks ago, I guess, that the teachers were directed to only have four forest school sessions this year, not weekly like at Freewill. Now, in a letter that we received last week, we found out that it is being canceled and will be made into an after-school program. Being an after-school program means that not all children can participate, so instead of being offered to all students equally, which is one of the premises of this merger between the North and the South, it will only be offered to a select few. Shameful. And lastly, I leave you with this. My third grader, for whatever reason, eats lunch with one fourth-grade class. She has almost zero interaction with other third graders. Last Wednesday, a fourth-grade class had to go to an off-site play or something, I don't know all the details, but for whatever reason, this moved my daughter's lunch. Because of this move, she was able to see and say hi to her friends that were entering lunch as she was leaving. The joy and excitement in my daughter's face as she told me that she got to say hi to two of her friends was almost enough to put a tear in my eye. The Wayne Central School District should be ashamed of themselves for creating an atmosphere where children are overjoyed, to say the least, about seeing someone that they know outside of their class.
Chris Hayden, please.
First, I'd like to say, Ontario, New York. I have two concerns. My first concern is regarding the transportation policy, and second, statements made by this board concerning the transportation policy of no bus passes. I've discussed this here before, and I'll do it again. I, like several other people in this district, work a rotating shift schedule. My wife owns a small business and works there during the week. It is because of your policies that we cannot have our children dropped off at my house when I'm home, and at an alternate location if I'm not. Currently, due to your policy changes, my children get dropped off at an alternate location, and if I'm home, I leave, go get them, and bring them back to my house. This doesn't seem like a big deal, but if you guys have ever gotten children dressed and all together and brought them back home, it actually adds up. What I've asked before, and that I'm going to ask again, is that I just want my children dropped off at my house on the days that I'm here, and at a single, separate location on days that I'm not. I was told prior to this change that situations such as mine would be taken into consideration. However, my wife contacted the Transportation Office to discuss this, and was told that we do not allow a rotating schedule for transportation. So I suppose it was taken into consideration. Currently, your policy does not allow for a rotating schedule like this, and your Transportation Office and school administrators are not budging. Again, I'm not the only parent that has this issue. Your changes to the transportation policy have placed an unnecessary stress to not only the families in this district, but the children of this district as well. Last week, my daughter skipped her band practice because she was concerned that her little sister was going to be dropped off at home when no one was there. This is why I'm here: because you all are making changes to school policy on what appears to be a whim, and allowing absolutely no leeway. My second concern, prior to this board changing the rules regarding bus passes, it was sold to the parents of this district in part by saying, "This is how surrounding districts do it," and we contacted neighboring districts to confirm that not allowing bus passes is normal. This wasn't true then, and it's not true now. Webster School District allows bus passes per their Regulation 5701. Penfield Transportation Office was contacted concerning bus passes, and they said that parents send notes to the school office. Fairport Central School District allows the parents to contact the Transportation Office the day before a change to a child's drop-off location. Williamson also allows changes to be made the day of by contacting the school office. Pittsford also allows changes to be made by giving the driver a note detailing the alternate drop-off location. I'm not, sorry? You're thinking out loud. I'm not sure which school districts you contacted, but these are examples of school districts that make it easy for children to socialize outside of school. I know this is a lot, but I would ask you to please either consider changes to your transportation policy, or if you do allow circumstances such as mine, to communicate that to your administrators, so that I can put my children on a more regular schedule and relieve them of any concern regarding where they're going to be dropped off after school. Thank you for your time.
All right, Bradley Rush?
Good evening. My name is Bradley Rush, and I reside at 5170 Delphalane, Masseter, New York, town of Walworth. I would like to begin by thanking you for extending the public comment section tonight from the traditional 15-minute period to accommodate all of our voices. This past week, six other students and I met with district administration to discuss issues regarding high school scheduling and student concerns within the district. At the beginning of our meeting, we were told, "We, the board, are here to listen, but nobody came to talk. You haven't given us a chance to listen." We're not here for ourselves, as we'll be graduating just six short months from now. We are here to promote the healthy and long-term growth of Wayne Central. Moreover, it is imperative that we make it clear that we are here because we are passionate about these issues, we are not put up to speaking tonight by anyone or anything other than that drive from that passion. Over the course of the past year, several staff, students, community members, and groups that have been assembled to advise the board have communicated their views and opinions with the board. The board being the people that the taxpayers of this community have entrusted to make decisions for the benefit of all, but we, the community, have not been listened to. We are here tonight to communicate our concerns that were not addressed during our meeting last week. We have come to talk and expect that we will not only be heard, but that our concerns that we're bringing to you on behalf of the student body will be considered and listened to. As a student body, we are experiencing the new changes heavily in a way that has negatively impacted the educational and social aspects of our lives. Most of us have asked, most of us were asked in the beginning of the year how we liked the new schedule. In fact, like many of my classmates were advised to state, "We loved it." But after the last few months, we've realized how wrong it was for us to admit that we loved the new schedule. To this day, we still dislike the new schedule, and the ripple effects it has caused, not only to ourselves, but to the other students and families in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. My name's Alana Corniger, and I reside at 4005 County Line Road, Masseter, New York. So like Brad said, I will be the first to admit that I was optimistic to embrace the new changes, believing it would have a positive impact on our school. A few months ago, I even advocated on behalf of the new schedule, and I advocated on behalf of Learning Labs. But looking back, I now realize it was too early in the school year for me to make an accurate report on the changes that were made. The new schedule hinders my ability to be a well-rounded individual, and I can state with the utmost confidence many others are experiencing a similar problem. Some of you may be thinking that I'm crazy to say and complain about, "How can she complain about not overachieving?" But from a young age, I was taught to never be complacent with mediocrity. So, I strive to be the best I can possibly be at everything I do. My peers, those present and not present tonight, have that same mindset. As a board, you should be proud to have a district comprised of such highly motivated students. I'm here to make a parent the juggling act that goes into working, going to school, doing homework, playing sports, being involved in activities, and overall trying to enjoy life as a kid. Not even to mention the vast family issues many students experience behind the scenes. Students are constantly running, running to class, running to meet deadlines, running to jobs, to families. As you can tell, I ran here straight from practice. They're constantly trying to stay focused on the classes that we meet with almost every single day and have homework for almost every single night. At the conclusion of this speech, I hope you all have a deepened understanding of the numerous hats Wayne Central students wear throughout the day, and that the new schedule limits the amount of hats that those students can wear. The old block scheduling provided us with four 80-minute blocks, including an advisory period that allowed us to meet with teachers, do homework, go to the library, et cetera. As an international baccalaureate diploma candidate, advisory was a time when we could meet with our coordinators to work on the other diploma requirements outside of our classwork, except that I say in CAS. There is zero allotted time within our current schedule for the year-one IB diploma kids to work on either of those diploma requirements. Additionally, with our old schedule, we met with classes every other day, which gave us an opportunity to budget our time over a wider timeframe, similarly to how we will need to budget our time in college. Ah, college. Statistics show colleges want multi-dimensional applicants, and that well-rounded individuals are more likely to succeed in our ever-changing workforce. When I asked why a lot of the changes were happening, I got the impression that many of the changes implemented were for the economic benefit of our district. I understand that money is important for our district to operate, but I'm asking you, at what cost? Is the extra money worth limiting the ability of our students to be exceptional? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tom Bull, and I reside at 6704 Ontario Center Road. As is clear from the words my peers have spoken before me, there's a central issue here that we're here to talk about: mental health. If any of you go and ask a student if they feel like their mental health is being considered in the rework of the schedule this year, most will say no. Most will feel like they're drowning. Being a student in high school, stress is almost inherent. We are in the midst of mental and emotional difficulties due to hormonal changes, unexpected life complications, searching for and applying to colleges, and ultimately going through a time period where we are trying to become our own person. The new schedule compounds these natural stresses with a large amount of homework. With new 55-minute classes meeting nearly every day, there is a rather hefty amount of homework per night, as homework is due for every class every day. Because of this, students feel as though we are constantly on the go. We wake up and go to school for six and a half hours, report to our part-time job for sports practices after school, and then return home for dinner and two to three hours of assigned homework. Natural stress combined with the workload is definitely taking a toll on our mental state. In a survey I took in that class last week, a student's answer to the question, "Are you coming in for extra help when you don't understand something?" was, "No, because I never have available free time. My life is currently a chaotic mess." As students, we can't always find time to stay for school. As stated before, we have jobs, sports, clubs, and a life. If we weren't lucky enough to have a study block with a teacher whose class we actually need help in, then we are out of luck for that day. The work that we need to help on is due the next day, and we will fall another step behind. This inability to have a designated time in the day in order to get help is where we need, get help where we need is a major stress inducer. Stress creates more stress. I know two other people who have withdrawn from school completely and went to finish at a local college in the past two months because they simply cannot handle the stress, the exhaustion, that the stress, the workload, and the exhaustion we as a student body are feeling. These are our friends, our siblings, our peers, that we care so deeply about. Not to mention myself and so many other students have younger siblings in the district who we wish will never have, who we wish will never have to experience the stress and anxiety we are enduring right now. Thank you.
My name is Veronica Jerseyk, and I reside at 5776 Alpine Drive, Ontario, New York. Over the course of these past two weeks, the seven of us have interviewed and collected data from students in grades nine through 12 to talk about the new schedule and how we are handling it. Thirteen out of the 14 students in one of the classes I interviewed stated they have jobs. The same group also claimed that they go right from school to their jobs at 3:00 PM. Then, with a small two- to four-hour slot when they get home, they are cramming in rounds of schoolwork in order to make deadlines for the following day. Because of this process, the amount of work we receive becomes half-completed and half-understood. Due to the new schedule change, our ability to receive help has been drastically reduced. We no longer have time to meet with our teachers because the advisory period has been taken away from us. The replacement for advisory was supposed to be Learning Labs, but with the Learning Labs implemented to alleviate this change, most of us students have study blocks that do not correlate with the free periods of the teachers that we need to talk to. For example, I am in accelerated classes, like AP Calculus. With this course, there's only one math teacher who can help us because she's the only one who teaches the course. So if the AP Calculus teacher does not have a Learning Lab during our free time, we cannot seek the help we need. This lack of a universal common period in which students can seek help from any teacher can be detrimental to those who aren't able to stay after school because of a job or other personal reasons. Students shouldn't be, should be afforded the opportunity during regular school hours to visit a teacher for help instead of hoping to get lucky that both parties' free periods align. So again, another paper, another test, another lesson goes half-learned, half-understood, and half-cared-about. Unfortunately, this is not a problem happening in just one class, but in the vast majority of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brooke Hastings, and I reside at 7257 Pear Tree Meadows, Ontario, New York. We say that we value learning in the high school, yet so many kids now struggle to actually learn the material of the course and are simply just preparing for tests. While I agree this has always been an issue, the shortened blocks make it even more difficult for students to stay focused on a topic and soon are lost and very quickly behind. As a student who has always loved learning in school, it is disappointing to see that students are given even less of a chance to truly comprehend the things they are learning every day. The shortened blocks also make it easier for the kids who have a hard time focusing and understanding to slip through the cracks of our new, fast-paced schedule. Since these shortened blocks try and squeeze so much content into little, short periods, it makes it impossible to miss a day of school due to illness, appointments, or family obligations. Students should not have to live in a state of fear in regards to missing one day of school because they will be so behind on what they already feel like they are barely learning. Another issue I would like to discuss in relation to the new schedule is the loss of early release and late arrival. For those who do not know, early release is when students, specifically seniors, who have study blocks at the end of the day, can leave school early, and late arrival is when students who have study blocks can come in late to school. No class time is missed, just study blocks that for most students are used as nap time. Starting this year, this privilege is no longer available to the senior class unless you're in work experience. I use the word "privilege" because I understand that this is not something that I should be automatically given to every single senior. However, I do believe that for students who have honorable grades, who are involved in school activities, and who do not have a disciplinary background, should be granted this privilege. Since this has been taken away from seniors, many students such as myself have had our parents call in for us to be taken out of school during these study blocks or to come in late. But this still goes on our attendance record as unexcused hearties or dismissals, which is simply unfair. As a student in the process of applying to colleges, I do not want schools that look at my attendance to think I am skipping school or being lazy, because in fact, I'm the opposite of that. I get all of my work done, and the study blocks that I'm required to come into school for and stay in school for are not being used for schoolwork, simply because I do not have any left. I would much rather be using the extra hour in the morning to get some sleep than come in and sit at a desk doing nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jake Schmidt, and I reside at 7114 Ontario Center Road. Students, just like all other people, need a break at some point, and essentially, we are not getting one. Due to being overworked, overtired, and physically and mentally drained, study blocks have turned into nap times. Work experience has turned into an outage for students to get out of school early enough to have a break before after-school jobs. At bedtime, and bedtime for high school kids is on average around midnight due to the load of homework as well as the balancing act of possibly having a job, playing a sport, and/or participating in clubs. If you're an active student and an active participant in the community, as so many of us are, you don't have time to stay after every day, or even every other day. Some days, the only time you get to be home is to sleep, and if you get home at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock, because you had to go from a sport right after school to a job right after your sport, and then you have to worry about homework for possibly three to five different classes, that's being overworked, and that's having no time to decompress. And the common answer to this problem is that the student has 40 minutes to stay after between school and sports. One out of the five days are taken away due to faculty meetings, and that's completely okay. But that leaves four days, which is 160 minutes a week, to get help for a possible 1,500 minutes of class in a week, depending on the amount of classes you take. We are in a way being penalized for wanting to take more classes and involve ourselves more with things other than homework. And that's assuming that every teacher is available to stay after school every day, which in reality never happens because they too are people with lives just like us. If you need help in multiple classes, you are essentially out of luck, because having homework for five different classes due the next day, every day, combined with having a life, is one tough task. It's because of this that if you ask any student, as we have, most will say that their GPA has decreased from last year to this year. As students who would never wish to disrespect your decision or undermine your authority, we really hope that you can listen to what we are saying, and we ask you to listen to us because our sentiments represent those of the vast majority of the student body, and we can tell you that these problems will continue. We are asking you to come into our classes and witness what we are experiencing. We aren't being given the 15 minutes of homework per class because that simply does not work, and a class cannot function that way. Ask us questions, and we will answer you truthfully. Ask our opinions, but most importantly, try to understand the pressures we are under and the frustration we are feeling. We need you to hear us and listen to what we are saying when we tell you that we physically, mentally, and emotionally are struggling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Alicia Grippo, and I reside at 5855 Hopewell Drive, Ontario, New York. I was a senior who gave the report to you at the end of September that stated I love the new schedule. After these last few months, I followed the proper chain of command, gathered these six amazing people next to me, and ended up here in front of you. I'm here because I believe in change for the greater good. I believe in the ethics I have learned here at Wayne Central, which is to stand up for what I believe in and doing what is right. I was told that no one could stop me from speaking at the board meeting tonight, but I was heavily advised to reconsider my decision to speak to you here. But I feel that if I followed that recommendation, it would be an injustice to every student, faculty member, and family in this district. I am one of the students who are struggling. I am one of the students who is anxious, sad, depressed, over-exhausted, and drowning. And right now, more than anything, I want you to look at me, not as a number, but as a daughter, a granddaughter, a cousin, a sibling, a friend, but most importantly, as a person. I am tired, and so are the 2,500 students and faculty in this district. When I put on my medical scrubs, the number-one priority are my patients. When you put on your student tie, the only priority, hopefully, is the success and well-being of the great students and staff here at Wayne Central, especially now when we desperately need it. I was once told that I was going to set the world on fire, so here I am now, ready to do just that. Now the rest is upon you. Thank you.
Move on to a board member comment. Does any board member like to speak?
The Four County Legislative Committee met on Saturday, December 9th, and a couple upcoming events. We are still working on our position paper. Our next meeting is Saturday, January 6th, and then on Tuesday, January 16th, prior to the Four County General Membership Meeting, the Legislative Committee is meeting with the Four County Board of Directors to present our papers. So, if anybody else on the board would like to go that evening, it's Tuesday, January 16th at 5:45, and we can let Kathy know and sign up for that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tim. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to extend condolences to the family of Ron Pori. For those of you who do not know Ron, he was a Wayne Central graduate. He was a veteran, and he was a math teacher in both the middle school and the high school his entire career. His wife, Judy, was an English teacher at the middle school for much of her career. So on behalf of the board, I'd like to extend condolences to that family. The other thing is, I recently had an opportunity to attend a Four County School Boards meeting. The chancellor of the New York State Board of Regents was there, the vice chancellor was there, as well as Regent Norwood. In their remarks, they mentioned two things that I think particularly resonate with Wayne Central. They are looking at equity for entering kindergarten. They are looking particularly at what they can do for pre-kindergarten students, so that as students enter kindergarten, they're on an equal footing. They're also looking at the equity as students graduate. Now, we know that the state has a college and career-ready figure, which is based upon two examinations and whether or not you graduate. two examinations and whether or not you graduate on time, but they are looking at some other measures to make sure that students are graduating career and college-ready. The other thing that they mentioned in their remarks is that they presented their budget this week, and while the budget calls for an increase in state aid, foundation aid in particular, I would say that they are less than optimistic about the opportunities budget-wise. They also particularly mentioned that they hope that the legislature did nothing that would cause them to roll out a program before they were ready. They have learned from their past mistakes with Common Core and with some other things that they've rolled out before they were ready, and they're very conscious of the fact that if they do make changes, that they need to be well-thought-out and well-planned. I think it's particularly promising for those of us who are engaged in education that the chancellor is a former principal and a superintendent of schools. The vice chancellor is an attorney, and that speaks for itself. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Anyone else? Phil?
I wanted to say thanks to all of the students for showing up tonight, and most importantly, this is the second meeting in a row where we've heard from the students. It is common in this role that we're in to hear from some version of taxpayers or community members or even staff, but it has been especially rewarding, in a way, to hear from the students the last two weeks, or two meetings. Keep it up. It's appreciated. I did want to say that on behalf of the meeting that you guys had with Mathis, the board received, I stopped counting, I think it's something like a 20-page email from the District Administration outlining all of the issues that you guys had brought up ad nauseam. I mean, it was a long email. Probably could have been a briefer. I apologize, I'm suffering from a cold. But it was very informative, and it was even better to hear from you guys in person tonight. And I'm assuming that a lot of these other young adults are probably also students, unless you're just like random kids who showed up. I think I heard something about coming and showing the support, so I think it was real cool that everyone's here. And also, I don't know if everyone knows this, I'm sure that the six or seven that met with Mathis do know this, it was discussed at the last board meeting, we are looking into having a student board rep. That is something that is continued to be looked into. I think we're getting some more information on it tonight. Unfortunately, when you get a room full of old people together, it takes a long time to make a decision, so, and there's lawyers involved, so that makes it even worse. But that is something that I am in support of, and I think it also gives you guys another avenue to reach the board. So thank you very much for coming.
Thanks. Anyone else? Carla?
Yeah, I just want to thank the, both the PTOs from the elementary and primary school for asking the board to help out at the Secret Santa Holiday Snowflake, whatever the name of it was. What was it, Carrie? Polar Express, that's it. It's been many things over the years. It brought back a lot of memories from my days at Freewill with my own kids, to have them pick out their little trinkets, and I made an awful lot of pancakes and sausage that morning. But it was a lot of fun, and I want to thank those folks who extended the invitation to the board to help out. It was a nice morning to spend with families in our community. And with regard to the students, I think back 15, 16 years ago, when we went to block scheduling, we had students who were adjusting from a traditional schedule to block, and there were some growing pains there. So, we hear you and we're listening, okay? Thank you.
All right, this time, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Falcone?
First, let me start, let me start first by thanking, as several of you have already, I want to thank our students. Not only are these some of the best students that I have ever known and seen, but they are really smart, intelligent, and I have enjoyed the time that we've had in terms of discourse with them. Shortly into my report, I'm going to share some of the information in terms of response from the discourse that we had just recently together. But first tonight, I want to start by talking a little bit about some of our highlights. We first start tonight with highlighting a couple of great things that are happening in the district. This week, Tuesday, and on Wednesday, we had some wonderful concerts. We have a couple more coming up next week on Tuesday and Wednesday. Our students are doing a fantastic job. Just last night, we had the middle school concert, our choruses and our bands, and just a really great job. So we congratulate our teachers for the great job that they have been doing with our kids and for the great job that the kids have done in our recent concerts. We also want to congratulate Jonathan Switzer. He is one of 25 New York candidates in the running for the 2018 U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. He's representing excellence in education and the promise of greatness in young people. So just very proud of Jonathan's accomplishment. Congratulations. And then also, we want to recognize WP students who performed a holiday concert at the Fairport Baptist Home and gave residents decorations and holiday artwork that they made in our school. So just some really great things happening in the district. And one of the things tonight, before we get going with the other parts of our report that we'd like to highlight, is a really great partnership that's happening in our district this year for the first time. This is called Community Reads, and so we have some folks here tonight who will share a little bit about this. So I'm going to just kind of sit over to the side and allow Dr. Syracuse and our guest to be, and Mrs. Tetro, to share about Community Reads. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Calvin. I have Mrs. Tetro here with me and Derek Poole from Literacy Volunteers of Wayne County. And this is a partnership promoting early literacy for our kids and our community and our families. This is an endeavor that really began a couple of years ago with John Robinson was the ASI at SOTUS, and he actually approached me. We began discussing it at that time, and here we are this year, it's come to fruition. So Mrs. Tetro and Mr. Poole are going to talk a little bit about the program and how it's going.
All right, again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to highlight a really special program that we're very excited to bring to our children at the K-2 level. I'm excited to have Mr. Derek Poole by me, and he's going to share with you a little bit about the implementation and the positive impact that's having on our school climate, on our kids, and on our community as far as families. This program, as you'll see tonight, it really highlights one of the many efforts that we're making with that birth-through-five, early literacy and K readiness efforts. And that has been part of our strategic plan, as you know. So this certainly aligns with our plan, and we did this in a very thoughtful manner. But it also aligns to a strong body of research, and actually, I was so thrilled to hear you speak about the Board of Regents and some action that's happening right now at our state level, and certainly aligns with our efforts at Wayne Central. So there's some compelling research that really indicates our children who attend those high-quality care programs and education programs, they're much more prepared for kindergarten. They have those early language skills that are so critical, and they're less likely to repeat a grade or to drop out from school. There's also many indicators that show that these high-quality care programs and educational programs bring us some of the highest returns in the state of any public investment by reducing future expenditures. When you take a look at it, that early intervention reduces costs of special education, public assistance, and our criminal justice system. So again, this is well-supported by the research. But as Mr. Miller indicated, there has been a refreshed approach with New York State in understanding the importance of this. And they've actually proposed a $37 million budget for the 2018-19 year, and they've enacted a committee. It was called the Early Childhood Work Groups Blue Ribbon Committee, who's really dedicated to these early intervention efforts. You hear us talk about the birth-through-five, but they've actually expanded it, birth-through-eight, and it really ties in that importance in research. They have the vision, we envision a New York where all children thrive from birth, flourish in preschool, enter the school-age program on a trajectory of success. They're academically proficient in third grade by growing up healthy and having opportunities for high-quality, early learning experiences that are culturally, linguistically, and developmentally appropriate. I like the fact that the state has extended this to eight because we know how strong that research is, that if children are not reading at grade level by third grade, it has some pretty serious implications on their future success. So with that, it falls very nicely into the, our Community Reads program, again, that we've implemented, and I want to thank Mr. Poole for being with us this evening and sharing a little bit more about this exciting program.
First of all, thank you for having me. This is really important. My name is Derek Poole, I'm the founder of the program, and I wish I could speak as well as the young people sitting behind me tonight. They were great. Real fun fact, we were asked by program, I founded this program almost 10 years ago. I am the Family Literacy Coordinator for Literacy Volunteers of Wayne County. And last year, the New York State School Boards Association asked us to be one of the opening acts. So we were at the summit in Buffalo at the conference. We opened it up, John Robinson and myself, and we found great value. We had a lot of downstate school districts that wanted to hire us on, and we're very committed to rural school districts, but my heart is here in Wayne County. Each year, we allow one or two schools to come on board. This past year, we had Gondanda and Wayne Central. We are entering our third month, and so far, it's been this wonderful relationship. I think the timing is great, too, as we have two schools that are merging, and the eight kindergarten classrooms, teachers, and paraprofessionals, and children have been wonderful. So along with the strategic plan in our Community Reads program, we strongly believe that the sooner we can engage family with reading, the more likely children will be to recognize the value of literacy in their homes. This is after a large body of research, working with adults, working backwards, and asking them, "What does it take for you? Why did we wait so long to become a reader at age 60, at age 70, at age, at 80?" And it's amazing, they didn't have opportunities, or generationally, it wasn't important. As a result, our community becomes stronger and more vibrant, and together, we create a culture and love for literacy and books, and that is super key. And we feel like in the three short months, we're seeing that, where kids are asking for it. Here are some pictures. This is one of our classrooms. This is Linda Perkins is a retired Victor School teacher. She taught first grade for 43 years. She is one of my assistants, she's one of my rock star volunteers. The kids are very engaged, as you can see in the class. Currently, you are at the, we have three different levels of commitment, and Wayne Central is at our, at our Level 2, and it's working with schools and with families. And there is a third possibility for next year, and it's really engaging that community piece. We're working on, you're very privileged to have so many businesses, and you have a lot of opportunities here, and working and expanding into the community. For example, Lyons National Bank, the former CFO is on my advisory board. Lyons National Bank, working with the school to support a family literacy, which brings families out together. We do that read aloud modeling. We just had our family, our first family literacy component, our Family Fun Literacy Night. We had almost 200 people here. Mrs. Tetro had 51 surveys that were returned, and from the information, families are really interested in this. So there are opportunities to expand. It's me reading probably a very silly story. Actually, this is The Night Gardener by the Fan Brothers, they're English writers.
They loved that story. He's a rock star when he comes into the building. Kids just love the time spent.
One of the things that I would say, and I think this is key, there is a rock star component, and for many children, myself or one of the volunteers who happens to be a male, this may be the first time they've ever seen a male read to them in their entire lives, and that is really significant, too. Do you have any questions at this point for the body of work? I felt like I crammed allotted in a short period of time. Sure.
The trend is more nonfiction, to get kids into more nonfiction versus fiction. Is that something that you stress with the people? Like, whatever they choose to read, do you kind of gear them toward what, whether it be fiction, nonfiction, or whatever, to read, or is it a choice that they come in with?
We always have a balance, so it's probably 50/50, and it's fairly intentional what we choose. We do a lot of first-grade-level biographies of individuals, and then we have some silly stories. But there usually is like a moral to the story, so it ties in. And teachers can also request certain areas of books, too, for our readers to read. Pam Pendleton, who is not here tonight, I guess, she has been one of our readers, and she's doing a great job. We're happy to have her. And also with that third-tier level of sponsorship, it is a slight fee increase, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but it will continue to have trained, we do in-house trainings with that money. It's a small increase.
Moving forward, trying to get the community involved, or if there are people in this room or watching on the video who are interested in becoming a volunteer to help read, what would be the process to get that started?
That's great. So they can either contact myself, or they can contact Pam Tetro, and we email back and forth on a weekly basis or multi-times a week. And then we will probably have another training in January, so it's a good time.
Okay, Board, thank you. And thank you very much for coming tonight, we appreciate it. And Board, this program also coincides with our strategic plan. One of the goals on the plan is that we look to find a way to get children involved in literacy at earlier ages. Our K through 2 levels, we're certainly looking at, and so one of the programs, this is one of those programs that we're using to assist us as we move forward with our strategic plan. So thank you. I'm going to ask Mrs. Tetro and Dr. Syracuse if you can just kind of stand at the table as we talk and transition into our next topic. So we want to just kind of clarify some things tonight. We heard a couple of things during public comment, and we will certainly look into some of the concerns that we heard in terms of transportation. I think at a recent meeting not too long ago, we shared names of districts, we shared even their applications in terms of those who do from those who don't with regard to bus passes. So we've had a lot of disclosure out and around about that. But we'll certainly come back and share, and we need to look into some of these concerns that we heard tonight, and we'll certainly look into those and get back to the Board. But one of the things that we also want to follow up on is Forest School, because over the last week, we know that there's been some chatter out there around it, and we just want to kind of be clear and make sure that everybody is on the same page as to what is happening and where we're at around Forest School. So just, just in terms of history, let me first start with saying that approximately one year ago, we began a conversation in our district around Forest School. We had two teachers who wrote a grant outside of the district, and they were awarded an opportunity to go to England, if I remember correctly, and able to go and to learn this methodology of teaching and how to bring Forest School to life in schools. And they were, they went and came back. And in coming back, they did share with us some of the outcomes and what they had learned, and asked if the district would be interested in possibly bringing Forest School to the district. Now, all programs that we have in our districts, they do have a vetting process. And in terms of the process, first, once we learn about what the programs are, we do what's called a pilot, where we try it out first with a couple of teachers, and then grow to a couple more teachers. We look at the curriculum planning pieces that need to be in place. We have discussions with our staff. We look at professional development that needs to take place, and then outcomes with our students. We share those outcomes, we have discussions. And then, Board, we come to you, and we share the program- And then, Board, we come to you and we, we share the program, you know, what's, what's happened. And then we ask and look for approval. But all programs go through a piloting and a vetting process. Now, last year, in the middle of the year, this new program had come to, uh, Wayne. And it was primarily, uh, taking place at the Freewill campus. So we had some classrooms that were, uh, involved in Forest School. Not all of the classrooms were actually doing Forest Schools. Some were, and it was kind of growing little by little. And we had some great experiences with our students in that program. And when we were in the middle of the study, we began to hear from a lot of people about Forest School. But people kind of just assumed automatically that it was a approved program, that it was something that we had already been doing, or that something that was going to, you know, it was already a program that had already gone through these stages. And it had not. But we heard from our community, there were some great things about it. And we heard that actually from our teachers and some of our kids. And so we were still very interested, um, in trying to work through and do some more piloting with the program. Dr. Syracuse, did I miss anything? Or Mrs. Tatro, just want to make sure that, is that accurate? Or anything else that you'd like to add? Okay. And so, as we began to transition last year, we heard about it. And what we thought that we would do was look to see if there was a way that we could continue the program, uh, in our, our merged campuses. And so the program again became a, a discussion topic during the transition. We, we knew that there were some great things happening. We also knew at the time that we still would need some professional development for staff. We, when we do new programs, we also need to try to find ways to get staff to buy into those programs and to talk and figure out, um, what their interests are. We knew that we need to do some professional development around the methodology because it is a different way of teaching, um, and exploring, um, uh, learning. Um, and we needed to do some curriculum development. So, um, Forest School didn't come to us with a manual. It didn't come to us with, you know, lessons, uh, already kind of designed. We had some things that we had learned. There were some things that we were picking up. So there was some work that needed to be done around that. But we were still working to ensure continuity, consistency. And, and also, one of the things that we wanted to make sure of when kids in our program get a program, that all kids have the opportunity, that there is equity across the district. Whatever program we offer, we want to make sure that every kid has the opportunity to be engaged in that program. So, uh, we, we know that even after last year, we knew that we would have some more work to do on this. Some more piloting, some more training, some more curriculum planning, some more professional development, outcome sharing, and, and then the whole approval and disapproval pro- process. But we worked to still try to bring that process to WP. Particularly, we found that we had some teachers at grade one who would be very interested in doing that. And so, uh, earlier, uh, in, or excuse me, later in the year last year, we began to plan for that as we were making a transition. Our teachers actually met the first grade team. And it was agreed upon amongst the team that they would do four lessons, um, in the fall. Pam and Mike, you want to share a little bit about that?
Yeah, I can share a little bit. As you remember, we brought on, in additional, enrichment coordinator this year. And back to our strategic planning discussions, it was, we wanted to provide enrichment for all. So at the time, we were doing enrichment and pullout for some higher-level students. But we really wanted to expand that, knowing, um, the benefits of enriching all. So we charged each of our grade levels with selecting an area for enrichment and then deciding collaboratively as a grade-level team, what that's going to look like, what standards are you going to address. So we were really thrilled, first grade took, uh, interest in Forest School. And, um, we're very excited to address some of the ELA standards, uh, in writing specifically. So, uh, they planned the Forest School lessons. However, again, we only have those two members who have this training and expertise. So six members of the first grade team, or seven rather, did not have that. But our enrichment coordinator thankfully had that too. So they worked collaboratively with the team to plan these lessons. And they did agree upon four lessons. I will say, some wish to do more, um, while others, it might be too quick of a pace. And that's that balancing piece as we blend cultures. But we also want to make sure that all teachers feel prepared and that all kids have that access to this vehicle for learning. And I will say, our kids have had a fabulous experience. And they are currently, um, planning some spring sessions. But obviously, preparation needs to be done. They want to prepare the lessons, and we're also trying to build capacity. So Mr. Syracuse and I did meet with our two staff members who have this expertise back in the spring and continued planning through the summer. Just really starting to be thoughtful about how do we build capacity so other teachers feel this level of confidence in accessing Forest School to reach standards as well. There's a lot of safety pieces that go along with this. There was a great deal of training that happened with these two staff members. So we're trying to build that capacity. But again, that takes some time and some comfort level for folks. So we're trying to move at a pace that's thoughtful and targeted to help them with those standards.
And in addition to, uh, the four lessons that the teachers had, uh, really worked together and said that we would, we would do this, uh, there was also a club that was enacted. And that was actually planned out over the summer months. So we had some parents say, well, you know, we're getting rid of Forest, Forest School, and then now we're gonna do a club, and that's just coming out of no place. And I, we know there's some things about that on social media. That's just not true. That information, that whole process, we worked over the summer to put into place. Our, so we knew that in terms of building capacity. We wanted to be careful not to overwhelm our staff because we, we have a transition year that we're going through. We knew there's a lot of things that were already going to be taking place. We have a new reading program. And, and with this program, we, we wanted to make sure that we, we took it one step at a time. But we also knew that there were some other opportunities through Forest School that we didn't want kids to lose out on. So we thought, another creative way to also bring this to any kid, that, any child that would like to participate, was through a club. So we, um, went out and we, uh, began to advertise over the summer. We had people who applied, um, and we had a club that was being enacted. And again, that was pre-planned. That wasn't something that we just came up with last week or last month. So even when the four lessons were done, kids could still do more if they wanted to around Forest School. And it was offered to all kids. And since, um, the four lessons have ended, our teachers have, are also, uh, they're having more conversations. Uh, and they have been meeting together and talking about additional lessons, uh, for the spring. So again, uh, we're still working and, and building and piloting, uh, some things. You want to talk a little bit about the, the four, uh, the, the teachers looking towards the spring, please?
Sure. I know, um, the team continues to meet weekly. And again, they collaborate and decide what seems to be the balance. They've now decided, probably once a month now, they're going to engage in Forest School. But they do want to do some planning with lessons ahead of time, so they feel, again, well-prepared. The other piece with Forest School is, um, we are fortunate enough to have such an active community. It really is helpful to have parent volunteers to accompany the children. Because you are going outside, um, there's a lot to coordinate with that piece, right? From being properly prepared with your outerwear going outside, to you've got a lot of hands-on learning experiences which are rich, but more hands certainly help. So that's the other piece, is some classes have more of a parent population that has that available time to volunteer, while other classes don't. So these are just some growing pains that we're working through and just wanting to make sure all classrooms are equipped with the appropriate support needed for these types of learning experiences.
So just again, a reminder, this, the program has not had its final approval in terms of, it hasn't finished even the pilot place, or, or piece yet. And so we're still growing the program one step at a time. Our goal is to continue this effort. But we want to be clear, this needs to be done in a well-thought-out way. So we're taking it one step at a time, and our staff is working together, uh, with regard to that. Any questions about that?
Just a couple, sorry, my voice. Just a couple of questions. Um, the club that you're looking to enact, is that just for first grade students? Or is that for K through two students in the building? And then the second piece is, um, you had mentioned parent volunteers. Since, you know, looking at the club and looking forward, because I do think this is a really, um, great opportunity for kids because different kids learn differently. And we are fortunate to live in a rural area that gives the opportunity to utilize things that maybe some other districts can't. So, um, you know, I don't know much about it. I'd like the opportunity to come and experience it as well. But I'm wondering, because we have some classrooms that are rich in parent volunteers and some who aren't, is there a way to get, um, a possible parent training in the program? So it's not necessarily classroom selective, but a parent volunteer, like database kind of thing? So when the dates are in the classrooms, you know you have trained parents who are available to help. So it's not, some classes are rich in volunteers and some aren't. To keep the equity that we're trying to do across the board and have a fantastic program in each of the grade levels.
And, and you bring up a couple of good points, and I'm glad I can clarify some things. The clubs traditionally at the primary level are open to second-grade students. A little bit older, it's not so appropriate to keep our Ks after school. It's a long day for them, big adjustment in their first year. But because our teachers engaged in Forest School for enrichment, the two advisors who are experts, they're the two that went away and trained, we really felt, you know what, we've got our first-grade students hooked and very interested. Why don't we start the club out for first-grade students this year? And then they can naturally go into second grade next year. The, um, the papers just came back on club interest, and it's very strong. They have three different groups, um, 10 dates each to experience Forest School Club. Uh, so we're really excited about that. And then the second part of what you addressed is really important because our first level is make sure our teachers are trained and they feel prepared to bring their kids out. That it's not dependent on that enrichment coordinator. It's one of the things we have to remember, that coordinator is spread out, not just in my building, but services the elementary and the middle level as well. So we can't make it just dependent on those experts. Once again, we need to build our capacity with staff. So that's, that's our first step. Our next step makes complete sense to have some parent training and that we could spread that across. So again, we just want to take thoughtful steps and make sure that we're planning appropriately.
Other questions?
I want to make sure I understand this correct. Um, the, the four lessons that you guys did, that was for first grade, that was all first graders?
Correct.
Which I believe you had said during this transition that we were going to provide equally to all of the students, these, all, all these extracurricular type things. So all the first graders got it, those four lessons?
Yes.
Now this club is going on, or it's going to go on, that is after school.
Correct.
And that is above and beyond, that's for, if you want to be in Lego Club, Rocket Club, or Banjo Club, after school, all kids can do it. And then you volunteer for it and you go do it. Is that correct?
Yes.
So this club that's after school, forestry school isn't being moved to after school?
No.
No.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because it seemed to be some confusion wrapped around that earlier.
Yeah, we, we knew.
The club is after school.
Correct.
Can all students, can all first-grade students who participated in forestry school, do they all have the equal chance to be in the club?
Yes, so letters of interest were sent home for parents to send back in. And that's now what they're planning their sessions around.
Okay.
So that will kick off sometime in January.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on Forest School Board? And, and just also, just to highlight, you know, we, we are working very closely with our schools as we, um, transition the district. Uh, we, we also had some questions about some of the experiences that kids had in the past. All of our schools are looking at the traditions that we had in the past. Our staff, uh, planning teams have been coming together and working on, uh, those traditions and newer traditions as well to create at, at the schools. Some things that we've done in the past, uh, we are doing a little bit differently. But our goal is to make sure that all students have access to those activities, that there's equity across the whole district. So we had some questions about Polar Express. You know, what happened to Polar Express? It was run a certain way just at the Freewill campus. Well, that's an activity that our PTO puts on. And this year, because of the capacity that they, they wanted to bring everybody together, they did it in a little different way. They did it on a Saturday, if I remember correctly. They had the big holiday shop. They brought in the tradition of the pancake breakfast, which was really popular at the Freewill campus. And they made it so that anyone who wanted to come was able to come. And we had really, uh, good participation, and we know that the activity went very well. We have some other traditions. So we had a Family Fun Night that's been created, I believe, at the primary school, if I remember correctly. Uh, Community Reads is another program. Our Monday meetings have been done a little bit differently. So in the past, we had Smile Days at WE. Uh, and we had morning meetings at, uh, Free, at Freewill on Mondays. So they wanted to try to bring and merge those cultures together. And so now what they have is a Monday, uh, meeting, but it's in the afternoon. And during those Monday meetings, we, some of the activities that took place in them that were familiar to the WE campus, um, have been merged into those activities. Um, we have some Character Ed programs, a, a variety of different things. And I can go down the whole list of them, that we're working together. Also, I want to thank our PTO groups who are working with us through creating some of the newer traditions and doing things a little bit differently. So you've already, we've already had the Welcome Back Bash, the, the Polar Express piece that we talked about, the Pancake Breakfast, and the Carnival, one of the activities that some kids got, but other kids didn't. Uh, the PTOs have said they want to do a big carnival, um, and bring everybody together. So as we go through, uh, some of these transitions, um, it will, everyone's learning and doing things in a different way than we've done before. There may be challenges, uh, but please know that we're committed to making sure that the opportunities are available and for all kids. Uh, we may do things a little bit differently than we did before. It's not that we're trying to, um, upset anyone. We're just trying to really make sure that we do it. And whatever we do, that we do as well as we possibly can. So the Forest School, I hope that people understand that a little bit better now. Because I'm not sure if some people did, but hopefully, we've been able to help explain and clarify some of the things around that. Okay, any questions on that, Board? Are we all good? Well, thank you, Ms. Tatro. Yes. I'm gonna ask Mr. Pullin and Mr. Schaefer if he can join us now. So I want to thank both of these gentlemen for taking some time out as well to be with us tonight. And, um, first, let me again say that as we transition the district, we continue to monitor our progress, um, and, and how we're doing with regard to the transition. While doing so, we, uh, do welcome stakeholder feedback. It is important to us, and we do use feedback to help guide the decision-making that is occurring. Transition, um, is not always easy. We are, however, just so we're all clear, um, we are really committed to resolving any concern. And as concerns arise, our goal is to not only hear about the concerns, but to respond wherever, uh, needed. And, and when you transition, uh, a district and merge cultures as we are doing, most will tell you that, uh, it, you, you may have challenges from time to time. But our goal is to make sure, again, that we resolve concerns as they arise. Please, we want to be clear with our community, and Board, we want to share with you, that we are listening, uh, at whatever information comes to us. We are also exploring, um, if there are better ways to do things, how we might do that. And we are responding wherever, uh, needed and necessary. All feedback is important to us. I'll say that again. All feedback is very important to us. And I want to be clear, that student voice in the process is also important to us. When I speak to our students, when I hear from our students, their feedback is very important. So in terms of our transition recently, as you heard tonight, several administrators, these gentlemen who are around the table with me and I, we recently met with a group of the seniors, uh, six of the seven seniors that are here tonight, we did meet with. And we, we met for approximately almost nearly three hours, uh, talking and listening and hearing from the, the students. Veronica was with us, I saw Veronica earlier, Thomas, Bradley, Lena, Alicia, and Brooke. There was one gentleman tonight, I think Jake is his name? I've not, I did not meet with Jake, but thank you for being here tonight. I, it was good to hear from you tonight, Jake. But we recently met with all of the students. And we did hear them and listen to them very intently, very purposefully. We wanted to hear what they needed to say to us. And the students shared with us their transition concerns with regard to the high school schedule, much of which you heard tonight. So some of our topics that we heard about were workload and homework. We heard about after-school supports. Uh, we heard about advisory and learning labs. We heard about counseling and mental health supports, uh, early release for seniors. And these are just several of the topics. There was multiple things that were said. But we just wanted to kind of highlight some of the things that we did hear from. And, um, all of those, just so the students know, they, I did share with the students that after I was finished with our meeting, uh, I asked them for copies of their notes, their actual physical notes. And I want the students to know that after receiving your notes, we did- And I want the students to know that after receiving your notes, we did share those actual notes with all of the board members. You all received copies of all the notes. So when I do hear from our kids and they shared with me those things, I wanted to make sure you know that I did make good on my promise to share that information with the Board of Education. Now, I did, as we normally do, first of all, I want to be clear, it's not my goal ever to tell any of our students or any of our people, you can't talk to this one, you can't talk to that board member, you can't talk to this board member. But what I do say to our folks from the district is that if there is a concern that does arise or that does take place and that people bring that to our attention-
Please be respectful of the audience or you'll be asked to leave. Thank you.
If there is a concern that we do hear about, I often do send people back through the protocol for resolving the concerns. One of the things that we try to do very hard is if there is a concern, we want to try to resolve those concerns at the lowest level of the organization wherever possible. So when the students met with me, I did share with them that, you know, there are some things that we like to do whenever we hear of concerns. First, we ask our students that they please start out with their principal, or actually start first with your teacher, your counselor. And if you don't feel like things are going well there, then bring the concern to your principal. And then after you've given each of those levels a chance to try to resolve the problems, you still don't see things working, then you can go and reach out to the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, that's Dr. Syracuse. You still don't feel like things are working there, you then reach, you can come in to reach to me. And then, of course, we know that we have the Board of Education. And our goal is again, to make sure that we hear and resolve concerns as we hear those issues. This protocol, by the way, is on our webpage. We've shared it throughout last year, throughout the study. And we just continue to try to help our people to use the protocol because many issues and many concerns, when we hear about them, if we start at level one before going to level three or five, we know a lot of times that those issues can be resolved. Yes.
And again, this protocol has been in existence for a while. It was just called Chain of Command before, but we didn't like those, that terminology.
That is correct. Yes, yes. So again, big ideas that were shared from the meeting, in addition to those topics, we, some ideas that we heard about was the change process, student voice, students wanted to make sure that they did have a voice in whatever change was occurring. Students shared with me their stress that they were feeling, concerns around mental illness, and then demands also outside of the school day. So topics in addition to big ideas that we kind of heard, basically. Gentlemen, am I missing anything? Are we good? Okay. All right. So we heard some concerns, and I just kind of want to share with you some of the responses and things that we've, we were doing. So first concern that we heard about was around study halls and advisory and learning labs. So some of the concerns was making sure that kids were to be able to connect with their teacher. And advisory, you know, some of the kids kind of shared with me that they were able to go to a variety of teachers. There have been some things a little bit differently done this year. And learning labs, not every child goes through a learning lab. So in terms of response, you know, we've been certainly looking at that. One of the things that I know the principal has done, I'll let him talk a little bit about it, but he strategically placed staff with students in study halls. Learning labs are supporting a number of students, but as we move forward with the schedule, we're going to continue to apply what we've learned and what we've heard about this year to help and assist kids around both, all three, study hall advisories and learning labs. I want to share a little bit, Mr. Pullin, around what's already been done strategically to help kids through study halls, learning labs, and if you can, go ahead.
Sure. As you heard two weeks ago in the last presentation, part of our school improvement plan was to really focus our targeted instruction through AIS. The learning labs have been something that are new, they're in their infancy, I spoke to that. What we've been able to do in certain cases is we've been able to create thirty separate study halls to provide targeted instruction through support resources. In particular, we work with the Office of Student Services and we have study halls that are run by specialized teachers. That's the first time that that's happened. In addition to those, we've been able to strategically place students in band and chorus with their chorus and band instructors as a way to try to minimize interruptions into instruction. As far as the study halls are concerned, we do have a number of study halls. We work very hard on trying to partner up our students as best we could with the number of study halls and strategically place them with staff members that are on their caseload. Whenever possible, you know, it'd be a teacher that they would see on a regular basis. If it's not possible, we try to partner them up with somebody at the grade level. And in some cases, it's impossible. So that's something that will be a work in progress, that's something that obviously is in their infancy as well. But it's something that, you know, we're trying to carry over that approach from the advisory. In advisory, we had a twelve to one ratio. In some cases with study halls, we're at twenty-five to one. And that's where the learning labs can come into play. And I think Chris will talk to you a little bit about the learning labs and the fact that the demand is starting to increase. And we know with certainty, it's not a perfect schedule where the teacher is going to be available when a student needs them. However, we feel very confident that adults with master's degrees should be able to walk students through the problem-solving steps in order to get them the necessary support until their teachers are available. So if you want to speak a little bit about the learning labs, I know numbers were one of the things that we left out at the last meeting two weeks ago in terms of how many students have been taking advantage of the learning lab structure.
The other thing that's important with learning labs is that it's important for kids to be able to access not only teachers and other staff members, as they would at the next college level beyond, where they have to utilize multiple resources for different people that they may not necessarily have directly in the classroom for support.
Currently in October, we had over two hundred students accessing learning labs throughout the course of the day. As of November, we had over three hundred students accessing learning labs. So almost a fourteen percent increase in the number of students accessing learning labs in two months with learning labs in existence. So we're very excited that students are accessing learning labs more often, that they are leaving study hall and getting support either with the learning lab partner or available teachers at that time. And that certainly is going to be something that's very important and very helpful for them in their academic, academic career.
At the same time, we do want to be clear, we've heard our students in terms of their concerns and this is, things are shifting a little bit. And so what we're going to do is be looking at our schedules, we're going to be looking at how students are set up and who's supporting them, and continuing to make that better wherever possible. Okay? So the second concern that we heard about was counselor availability. The students shared with us that they wanted to make sure that they had counselors that were available. We originally heard that there were some concerns that counselors' offices may be overloaded, that students weren't able to really get in and talk with the counselors. More so, as we started to talk, we learned that that was more at the beginning of the year. We have begun to really go in and look to see how that's going. We did realize that we had at least one extenuating circumstance happening with a staff member, which we certainly are not able to share tonight. But generally, we found that our counselors, for the most part, have been accessible to our students. Now, certainly there are things that come up from day to day. We may have a student that might go into crisis. We may have a student that may have some real challenge. But on average, we found that most of our counselors have been available and have been doing a great job with our kids. Mr. Pullin, you want to share a little bit about that at all in terms of data?
Well, I think the one thing that this really doesn't present is something that I spoke to two weeks ago as well, is that the counselors have been very active in pushing into not only phys ed classes to teach the lessons on the mindfulness, to teach healthy relationships, but also to focus on the resiliency. And that's something that takes time, planning, and coordination. And that's something that may not show on a typical schedule, but they're doing a fantastic job not only doing that, but also attending various meetings both within and outside of the district in terms of, you know, planning and trying to put program in place for the students. And that's something that I don't know that we ever pay enough attention to is just how much work that they put into the overall structure and how much support they provide, not only to the students directly, but also to the staff in terms of where we're going to support our vision.
And we did look at the numbers in the office. We took some data, we wanted to make sure we saw how many kids were actually recorded coming in. So we did check into that. September, we saw about twenty-four kids on average a day. And we do, just so you know, we have four counselors right now at the high school. We have a psychologist, there's a drug and alcohol counselor there as well. But we saw about twenty-four kids a day in September. October, that number went up a little bit to thirty-two per day. And then November, what we're looking at on average is about eighteen a day. And in December, it's gone down by one to seven, on average around seventeen a day. So we are certainly watching and monitoring. Our goal is if a kid, if a child needs support from the counselors, is to make sure that that support is available. And so we're going to continue to monitor and check in with our counselors to see how things are going. But that's kind of what we see right now. We want our kids to know though, we did hear that question, so we certainly want to make sure we keep monitoring that.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are there seasons during the school year where the kids need to access counselors more? Like I can think of right now, maybe some of the seniors as they're working towards, if they're going to college with fast reforms, we're getting some of that information.
Yes.
So are we giving the counselor, like during those busier seasons that maybe the students need to access for that, are we looking at the counselor's schedules to make sure some of that availability because they're doing so many other things that may not be visible to the people around them or in the community? Are we giving them that accessibility to be maybe in the office more and not, you know what I mean, outdoing their second, not secondary, but additional responsibility?
Sure. Yeah, certainly. There is a plan that the counselors will meet one-on-one with every senior and their parents if their parents are able to make those meetings, especially when it comes down to college planning and preparedness, whether it's questions on financial aid, whether it's questions on the application process. They do that, they will meet with every student one-on-one at some point throughout the year, certainly with the juniors in the spring. You know, we always plan with that in mind, that they're going to have very busy times and then they're going to have times where it's a little lighter in terms of their actual scheduled work. But there are always those times where it's necessary for us to deploy resources and apply it where necessary. So that could involve two, three counselors, it might involve a counselor and administrator, it might require one counselor picking up the work of another to make sure that the support is there in the application process and the deadlines are met. So we do look at all of that, they're very intentional with all of that, and they're very good about that. But again, from time to time, there are things that are going to come up that pull our attention from one thing to the next. And unfortunately, that work doesn't go away, it just gets moved to a different point in time, whether it's the next day or it's after hours, but that work does get done.
So we, we know that during the year, so like you mentioned, so the beginning of the year is a really busy time, right? So kids are coming in, you know, schedules may need some changes. Those first two months are just busier than normal times. When the college time, you know, around December, January, kids start to look at colleges and begin to apply. And so, you know, it can be a very busy time. So we're doing some things a little different this year. And one of the things that we are doing is we're watching everything, how it works, how it goes, what happens, what takes place. And some of these, these things that we are experiencing and that we're doing a little bit differently, we won't know how they go until we get through the year. And we're learning as we, with some of them as we go along. But yes, we are working, we're monitoring, and if there's extra assistance or support that's needed, then we'll be prepared to provide that support. Okay. So the third kind of concern that we did hear, another concern, was about after-school teacher availability. So we had heard that, you know, there were some concerns with, you know, maybe around the three to four-thirty times, some of our kids were staying really late and that they were, it was hard to get into the classroom because there were so, so many kids after, you know, around, up until almost four-thirty in the evening. So we wanted to just do some data check on that to just see. And we did do some checking through that. We didn't see all of our classrooms overloaded. We didn't, we really didn't see that up until around four-thirty every day. Mr. Pullin, you want to share a little bit about that? I know we did some data checks, we just did some random checks to go through and see what's happening. And we took about four or five days here worth of data. Let me share a little bit with you.
Sure. I think just going back to the two-thirty to three o'clock timeframe, Mondays are pretty much, you know, our students are, you know, attending Forest Study Hall. Those days are for our professional learning communities, for our faculty meetings, or for department meetings, or for any meetings, you know, and we designate that day. So as you heard earlier, that basically eliminates, you know, twenty percent of the work week that students have access to their teachers from two-thirty to three. That does leave them Tuesday through Friday, and on Tuesdays and Thursdays, there are four o'clock bus runs. So from two-thirty to three, the hallways are tend, they tend to be busy, whether that's attending Inner Merrows, whether it tends to Fitness Center, or whether that's staying after and working on camaraderie, playing foosball down in the tech lab, or seeing teachers for extra support. That number dwindles significantly from the three o'clock timeframe on to four, and that tends to be something that has to be pre-planned and pre-approved in order for the students and teachers to work. So I would say that those numbers are something that we're going to continue to monitor. I've worked with Joe and Greg, so through the business office and the Office of Instruction, come up with a very strategic plan for when those numbers come up and how often they come up. Because that is something that we know with certainty for our students that will attend the Vocational Education Center over at Williamson, having access to the necessary supports from three o'clock until four is something, you know, we're committed to doing. So those numbers fluctuate. And certainly that number also fluctuates based on seasonal demand. You know, when we get closer to midterms, those numbers are going to rise. When we get closer to finals, those numbers are going to rise. And we expect that, we're mindful of that. But that is something that we're going to go ahead and continue to monitor, just to make sure that we're paying due diligence because we don't want to have a shortcoming of our offerings and we certainly don't want to overwhelm that four o'clock bus run either.
And then on average, you know, that timeframe, the number of kids that you saw when you did your-
I would say probably, you know, faithfully, you could go anywhere from fifteen to forty-five students working on a project or an assignment in a classroom from two-thirty to three o'clock. And again, over the last few weeks, you know, as few as, you know, six to ten for the three o'clock to four o'clock timeframe. And some students like that downtime and they like the one-on-one time and they'll do whatever. And we have a number of teachers who will extend their workday and make sure that they're accessible to students because they do want to ensure that they're successful and they don't care what time it is, they're going to, they're going to be there. So-
But we want to be clear, we'll continue to monitor that. You circ-
Yeah, just clarify, there's kind of two after-school times, right? After-school for kids is the two-thirty to three, and actually after-school for teachers is after three because that's after their workday and they're putting their own time in on that.
Correct.
Give them credit for doing that to help the students.
Correct. We do have a number of teachers who will make themselves available at that point in time, and they're willing to do that. But again, those times vary depending upon what's actually on hand. If you were to come the night before senior project, you know, that's always a fun night for me. I think you see, you know, about a hundred and seventy-five seniors walking through the hall and, you know, we're giving them pep talks and calming them down. You know, if you were to come in in June, you're going to see a number of teachers who have the takeout restaurant numbers on hand and they're offering study sessions and doing a lot of things like that. So we'll continue to monitor that, we'll continue to work through some of those things and make sure that we are accessible to kids. But again, life happens and sometimes we're not always able to accommodate those needs. They can certainly stop, honestly, Mr. Schaefer and myself, and, you know, we'll do our best to support them.
Okay. All right. Another concern we heard from the students was that some classes kind of feel rushed, you know, because of the timeframe. And certainly that's something that we want to make sure that our kids don't feel rushed in the classrooms. And so this is a partnership piece that we're going to be working and partnering with our teachers around. We certainly want to help our kids, we don't want them to feel like, you know, they're going from one thing to the next and the next. And some class, I would say that's a mixture, so we, we may have some experiences where kids may feel rushed, and there's others who tell us that they don't. But we, our goal around that piece, we heard the kids loud and clear, we want to partner and we'll touch bases with our teachers who already have done some great things around professional development. And our teachers are really good, I would say, with being able to detect how students are doing and providing supports wherever possible. This is a piece that we've heard from our students and we'll be sharing it. We know that there's some teachers in the audience tonight who are hearing this for the first time, but this is something that certainly we want to make sure that we work together on. But this is something that certainly we want to make sure that we work together on, to partner around meeting and supporting our students so that that feeling is not there, basically. Definitely, you know, with a, with a different amount of time in class, changing and doing things a little bit differently is certainly something we want to work through, for sure. Okay?
Mathis?
Go ahead.
I just had a question or actually a comment. Fifty-five minutes is where we're at?
Yes.
That is, there are other districts who are high-performing districts who are having forty and forty-two minutes. So fifty-five minutes is a very balanced class time. I know it's away from block, but, you know, I think the data is showing that schools are moving away from block and going to a more traditional schedule between fifty and sixty minutes. So I think we're, we're there.
And so there's like a, go ahead. So there's, there's certainly, you know, different schools are doing different things, right? Some are going away from block, many are, some are going towards, you know, different types of modified blocks or different, different types of schedules. So there's, there's different kinds of things happening in the field right now, certainly, for sure. There are some schools who are doing things a little differently than, than the traditional block. But we, no matter what the timeframe is, we want to make sure that our students are not having that anxious rushed kind of feeling. So we'll work through that and we'll partner with our staff around that. And, and our staff are really good usually with partnering with us on those things. So something for us to kind of hear and to think through. We now have, so on average, so we used to have eighty minutes every other day for, for our classes, if I remember correctly. And now, instead of having it every other day, the classes are now every day. And so in terms of the minutes, so now, I think, Joe, if you know the minutes for that?
So we used to have eighty-minute blocks, two-eighty-minute blocks over a four-day period. Now we have fifty-five-minute blocks, we have three-fifty-five-minute blocks over that same four-day period. Classes in a four-day block, and the old schedule meant for a hundred and sixty minutes, that's just two-eighties. Classes under the current schedule meet for three-fifty-fives, which is one sixty-five. Our science classes were meeting for three-eighties, you know, over a four-day period. Our science classes are now meeting for four period, for every, pretty much every day, or four periods in a four-day rotation. And that, that is two-hundred-and-twenty minutes now, it was two-hundred-and-forty. So some classes have a few more minutes, some classes have a few less. Physical education is in a two-by-four now, it was in a one-by-four. So that was an eighty-minute, and now it's actually a hundred-and-ten minutes and we're more in line with the state mandate.
So, so as you transition times and schedules, training, learning how to best do that so that, that rush feeling isn't there, we'll, we'll work together and partner around that. Okay? But we want our students to know, we did hear them loud and clear. The next thing that we heard about was workload for students. The students did share with me that workload is, is quite a bit. They're shaking their heads, yes. That homework was, was a real big piece that, so, I kind of wrote like a little equation. What we kind of heard was, so more, we want kids certainly to take, one of the things that we want to do was have kids take additional classes if they were interested. And, and some of the kids kind of shared with, more classes equal more homework, which increases the workload. And, you know, taking an extra class certainly will require more work. And the kids shared with us that, you know, the workload, the homework is becoming a bit much. So on average, you know, if, if a student has four or five classes a day and there are, you know, there's fifteen to twenty minutes worth a night, you know, that does add up after a while, you're over an hour or so. Now, at the high school level, I do want to make sure that I'm clear about this. You know, high school students on gener, generally, we do expect them to be doing, you know, anywhere from an hour to, to maybe an hour and a half at least of homework. That's, that's the norm, not just here at Wayne, but in, in most districts. But I think what's important is to make sure that what we're doing and how we're doing it, that it is of importance, that it also makes a big difference in the lives of our kids. So when we hear our students say the workload is of concern because of the schedule, so the schedule is one thing, but the homework and the workload is a, is really a different piece. That's something that we kind of need to, to work together with, with our staff and kind of just think together as a team around, what's our philosophy around homework? How do we balance that? Where does formative assessment fit in and inform the process? And how do we balance formative assessment with the workload that students are doing? That, that's really important to us. So I want the kids to know that we'll certainly be partnering again with our staff to think this through and to figure that out. Workload is important. So I'm a parent, I have three kids, two of which we've already gone through high school, one who's still in the secondary level. And I understand, you know, the, the challenges that come with workload. And we certainly don't want kids to be overloaded. Mr. Pullen, I know you've done some things already around professional development around formative assessment. Do you want to share a little bit about that?
Yeah, you know, we're going to continue our work for the professional and earning communities. We, we continue to drive ourselves based on the work of the DeFores. We're really starting to, you know, focus in on those standards-based grading practices based on those four primary questions. What do we want students to know and, and be able to do? How are we going to measure it? What will we do when they already know something? And what will we do to respond when they don't know something? And then we're also really starting to look at our homework practices, the amount of homework we assign, the purpose of the homework we assign, and the high-quality formative assessments that Dr. Calvin just referenced. Those four questions will continue to be a driver for us for the foreseeable future because every year we have to ebb and flow with the demands that are placed on the students as well as, you know, what they're, what they're showing us that they can produce. So those things will continue to be a driver. We will continue to look at that standards-based movement. We do know that that's something that's going to be important for us. And the staff, we, we had a very open conversation in our last staff meeting about the number of activities that students are in after school, how many students are actually involved in activities after school and the amount of homework. So Dr. Calvin referenced fifteen to twenty minutes. And we said flat out, if a student's taking six classes and they're assigned fifteen minutes of homework a night, that's still an hour and a half. Now, if they're in the musical, if they're at a sporting event, or if they're working a part-time job, they got to fit that hour and a half's worth of homework in, in addition to those other activities. And what we know with certainty is we're not assigning just a, a minimum of fifteen minutes of homework a night. So those conversations will continue to happen, they're going to continue to be ongoing, and we're going to try to offer students and staff that same amount of support. Because one thing we do know also with certainty is if a staff member's assigning, a staff member has to grade it and they have to turn it around. So that, that is really important to us because the demands on the students and the demands on the staff, you know, could place us in a tipping point very quickly. So that is something we're going to continue to work on. And truthfully, we think the formative assessments might be a nice way to balance out how much homework we assign. And we're asking our staff to look both vertically and horizontally, within their departments and across the hall at their colleagues to see, is there a system or a methodology that we can employ that would offset the amount and the volume that students are receiving on a nightly basis?
Mike, I had a question, I'm sorry, Phil. Do we caution our students or give them some kind of instruction when it comes to homework? How important it is to put that phone away while you're doing your homework and study skills and things along that nature? Because I know, if I'm trying to do something and I got that phone there, it's going to take me twice as long as if it's in the, in the car. Do we offer best practices or anything like that in, at Wayne?
Well, it's funny you mention that. I mean, there, there are digital natives behind us, you know? So thankfully, you know, they're very, you know, skilled with technology. So I don't know that we necessarily caution them as to their homework practices because we do know, you know, based on all kinds of minds, some of them are going to look at that tool or device for the stimuli that it's going to provide. So whether it's their music, whether it's their paying attention, whether it's they're using it to phone a friend to get homework help, there's various ways that they can use that device. Sometimes they are distracted by it, sometimes they're playing Candy Crush or doing something along those lines. But what we will tell you that we're starting to really focus in on, and we're going back two weeks to that targeted population for our AIS boot camp, we're really looking at those executive functioning skills. And we're going to track a particular group of students that we're really developing those relationships with and fostering those skills. So the organization, the study habits, you know, the prioritization, and, and then really trying to foster that in so it becomes embedded in part of their daily practice. One of the things that I will say that we've actually encouraged the students to do, and, and we'll get to this in a minute, is download the, the Headspace app and then let them walk through some, some very strategic mindfulness practices. So, you know, I, I know that's a convoluted answer to your question, but I, I think if we ask them to put it away, we could be sitting in some spirited debates with those students behind us.
Carla, I can probably help you just a minute. You're a little older than I am, so. My, my, my kid uses this phone. The kids get on their phone to do homework with other kids, they actually do their homework on their phone sometimes these days. So we've got to broaden our horizons and look at it that way. Just saying, but that's good. She's really, I grew up with her, so I can say that to her. Okay, okay. All right, Snapchat may be doing homework. Now, one more thing, board sets policy, we will never set a homework policy, I guarantee that. You guys have procedures for your homework, whatever, we're not into the homework. Thank you.
Going through a similar change where I work, and I agree. I, I've been fighting for my kids to get headphones on their IEPs now because I see that tuning out distractions around them. So it works. But my, the concern I have hearing these students reading through the pages, homework went, oh. Now, when I worked in a building, they had block scheduling. We were going through this much content, so the homework was this much. Because we were trying to figure out, did they understand everything needed? So now I'm looking at a schedule where we're going through this much because we've cut the class back. So on a nightly basis, I, I guess I'm concerned how, last year I didn't hear anything from students about being overworked with homework and blocks. But this year I hear that they're being inundated with homework in every class. So I, I, and I have full faith that you guys are going to work through this. And I, it's just concerning me if I'm going through less material a day, which mathematically we are, you have to be because we cut the block to fifty-five minutes. The homework assignment should be less per day. So I, I don't understand how that's expanding because I know in the practice, when I went through the change from a block to a period, we went from eighties to forty-twos. Our homework, we weren't putting as much in, so the homework assignments were much shorter. So I guess I, I can't grasp that and I'm sure there's a reason for it. I don't need to know right now. That was just a concern that popped into my head. Because I know students I've spoke to in the past, that advisory block, a lot of times wasn't even used for homework because they were getting homework time in class during the block. And now I've also spoken, and I have full faith that these students are telling the truth of how much work they have, but I also have spoken to students who aren't bringing much homework home, if any at all. So I know it goes both ways, I just have that concern. And I know, I have full faith that you guys are going to look into that, make sure everything's on the up and up because we're here for the best for them. And it was just, what popped into my head is.
That is something, that is something that we're looking at currently because one of the things that you have to keep in mind, the program's in its infancy. So just like when we learn to walk and talk, we're going to stumble, bumble and bang ourselves quite a bit, you know? And right now, when it comes down to the pacing, and I know that might not be the best analogy, but, you know, there has to be some sort of learning opportunity or experience that we learn from and grow as we transition through this process. You know, so we talk about storming, norming and performing. One of the things you have to keep in mind, our teachers are not used to underperforming. So the, the pressure for them, a large part of it's placed on the expectations that they have of themselves to give the students the very best. We haven't had a chance to really look at data and digest what the data is informing us until we get to that mid-year point where we have midterms and we have a chance to kind of decompress, take a deep breath and look at what it's showing us because our pacing guides mathematically are not the, you just can't adjust based on mathematics and try to figure out, hey, two-thirds of a lesson today, a third tomorrow, keep going on. So that is something that we'll continue to go through and look at because the teachers are very mindful of that preparation that goes into it. And they're also fearful of leaving something out because they want to make sure that our students are prepared. And, and with the seven students behind us and the, the students that'll come to us on June sixteenth, our goal isn't about a Regents exam, it's not about, you know, how they do on a midterm or how they do on a final. It's, are they prepared for the real world when they leave us? And I would say to you, you know, a large part of the skill set that we're trying to foster was demonstrated here tonight, based on the articulation of a point of view and a particular point of view. But in order for us to, you know, pay attention to everything and make sure it's objective and not subjective, we're going to do exactly what you said. And it'll be continued to monitor monthly because as you look at the slide, this is a conversation we started in August. I mean, the, the work and the literature that we've been reading and the, the, the things that we've been paying attention to for our building planning teams, for our student population, for our instructional leaders, this started in August when we bring people back together to have those conversations. It's not a, hey, you know, we're going to do this because this is what occurred. We've been thinking that way all along because we know there are going to be bumps and bruises along the way and that we have to adjust accordingly. What we're, we're saying is we're going to be very intentional when we adjust because we don't want to sit here and go through a continuous cycle of storming. So we're going to collect that data, we do think along the lines that you're saying. We have to pay attention to that and, and we do know teachers will monitor and adjust those pacing calendars along the lines of, hey, when we have a chance to digest, we will. And when we have an idea as to what direction we need to move in, we will. And we've been very fortunate to receive a lot of support this year in terms of putting appropriate measures in place to support some of those things.
So again, did you have a question, I'm sorry? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I've been trying to save my comments to the end, but this is a, in this particular homework topic is, I, I especially agree with what Jeremy said. I'm staying out of what Carla said. I, I like, I think one of the takeaways tonight, of course, is that the students are being heard, right? We don't have three students sitting here, we've got a hundred here. But we don't want to disillusion the board, the staff or the students, excuse me. Everything isn't going to be able to be fixed, right? There, we're going through change, there are going to be some growing pains and we can't fix it all. We being the board or the district or the staff. But there are some things we can influence. And I like the answer to what I've heard so far over this topic of homework, which is, you're taking a look at it, you're going to figure it out. Because this isn't, like I said, this isn't three students, we've got a big voice here tonight. So I appreciate what the response is that we're hearing, that you guys are looking at it and you're going to figure something out. That, that is something that we can influence, right? Change is going to happen, we don't want to disillusion anybody. Right? We're not, we're not easing all of the stress and tension of being a student. But there are some things we can influence. So I really appreciate the answer, I hope the students appreciate the answer, that you're looking into it. It's our job to hold your feet to the fire and make sure that you actually do look into it and actually we see some movement on. So thank you.
All right, so we are, we will continue to work through, and again, students, I want you all to hear me. We did hear you loud and clear around the workload and the homework, okay? They're shaking their heads. Yes, we heard you. All right, the other concern that we heard was around early release and late arrival. So some of the students really were looking forward to early release and late arrival. And so when you fix one thing, sometimes in the schedule, it creates some other challenges. So some of our students are really want, are looking forward to that early release or late arrival. And this new schedule kind of doesn't allow for that in, in many cases. And so we are, I know, Mike, you've been working a lot with the school planning team around this issue. We have some creative things that we kind of want to talk through a little bit. And then we'll come back and share with you those ideas, board. We have some ways that hopefully will be a good fix for our students. And then it was, as we move into next year's schedule, hopefully this will be a non-discussion topic. So we'll come back and certainly share that. And again, students, I want you to know, we heard you. Now, I also want to say this too, as the superintendent, the person- As the superintendent, the person who's responsible for the learning, we also wanna encourage students wherever possible, as much as you can, continue to be in school. In that senior year, and I had two daughters who went through the senior year, we wanna encourage you to be there. So in the research, just, we have some kids who are going on to college very shortly here. You know, we have, by research, as you look through P through 20 data across the state, what we hear often is that many college students, they end up, even some of our kids who've been IB, AB, you know, Project Lead the Way, oftentimes they end up in some kind of remedial coursework around math and in writing in that first year of college. And why does that happen? And it doesn't happen in every case. But in those cases that it does happen, it's because of that year where math, they didn't have an extra math or they didn't have an extra writing course. And many of our students who are with us today, many do participate in IB and Project Lead the Way and all those kinds of things. But for those who, you know, certainly may not have an extra math or an extra English language or writing course. So one of the things in my role is to encourage us to continue that learning process. And certainly we wanna make sure that you do hear that from me too, so I heard you. I want you to hear me too, that if there's a way to take something extra in reading math, I wanna encourage you to do that. Because it just sharpens your skills. It gets you even more ready before you're going out into the real world. My, just my thoughts. Sorry.
And it's also cheaper to take them in high school than it is to pay for a remedial class in college.
Correct, correct, correct. Very much so. Okay, and we have a lot of courses as well here that are college courses, that you can get college credits. Many of our children, every year, one of the, one of the great things that happens is many of our kids take quite a bit of college courses. So when they get into college, they've already got a lot of their experience done. And it saves also for mom and dad some cost as well. And having two children in college right now, that has been a real help that they've taken those extra courses, sir.
Since we have a captive audience of students here, let me share a little bit of research for you. If you graduate from here with six college classes, chances are that if you go to college, you will graduate on time. If you have six college classes, you'll graduate on time. The worst thing that can happen to you is to leave here, go to college, not finish, and have an enormous amount of student debt. So if we're going to err, we're going to err on the part of pushing you perhaps harder than you would like to be pushed, maybe requiring more homework than you might like to do. But that's because we are trying to do what we think is best for you going forward in your lives. Thank you.
It was mentioned tonight that there are some students, because of either work schedule or different things, that parents are calling in, either for late or early dismissal. Just kind of food for thought. How are we handling that? You know, sometimes, let's be fair, we're, I was a teenager once too, and I liked my sleep. So, and I was fortunate enough to have early release. So I personally am a proponent of it. I think if kids have earned it and, you know, but I think if we're going to look at that as an avenue, I encourage the students, we're hearing you, that you're tired, that you play sports, that you're doing activities and you don't have a lot of time. So I personally would like to see an early release. That's just my own personal opinion. But I would like to encourage the students that if we're going in that direction moving forward, to really consider how you utilize that time. You know, it is helpful, and I've been in your shoes before. Having early release, playing sports, working a couple of jobs, doing a lot of things. We, you know, we do remember how taxing it is at times too. It's just the workload has really, really increased over the years. And we do recognize that, and we recognize that there are a lot of other pressures that you are dealing with more in immediate response than we used two years ago because of the accessibility to social media and the internet. So, you know, as we look at that and as we're seeing it, you know, I'm just curious, are we seeing a trend with the increase in addition to what the one student had mentioned tonight? Are we seeing an increase in that where either kids are coming in later? I don't want you to know tonight. I'm just curious moving forward. I may be in the minority here about early release, but.
First, do you have a brief precaution?
Yes.
Some of those students may regret what they said tonight. No. No, we are looking at that. But the piece that you have to keep in mind is, you know, early release as it was last year had only been in existence for about five years. Because if you think back, advisory used to be second period. Prior to that, I don't know. I've only been at the high school for seven years. I know under my watch that the early release, late arrival has been something that we've monitored. And to give you a general answer without the specificity, we take those cases one student at a time, and most students know we're accessible. So if they come down and they talk to us and they have a legitimate concern, certainly we work to find a resolution for them. But the way it was in the fall, it'd only been around for five years. There might even be a parent or two at this table. When their children received early release, they said, what? So he's smiling, so it is something he remembers. But yeah, that is something we're mindful of. And we also have to keep in mind the liabilities when students travel. If we come up with a concept to give them open campus, I know that's something that's on all of our minds as parents and as people who are responsible for their health and safety. Are we putting them out there more often than we should? And that's the primary concern right now that we're trying to work through is if we come up with something where students have these additional privileges, are we putting them on the highway more than they would be if they were sitting on campus? And that's something that we really don't take lightly.
All right. Well, we'll continue certainly to think about that. Okay, so just a couple, just one, a couple more things here. The mental health concerns. So the students also shared with us mental health concerns, stress levels. And again, they, listening to them, they, a lot of connection to the stress levels. Mental health concerns was connected to the workload, the homework amount that they were getting. And so we've already shared a little bit about how we're gonna partner around that homework piece. We've already begun to also put some things into place around mental health concerns. So you've heard me talk about the mental health clinic that's, hopefully we'll be able to start right after the holiday. The mindfulness training. I know you've done some mindfulness training with your staff. We've done some PD around mental health. We've had some school-wide programs already in. Kevin Hines was in recently. So we'll continue to work through and support our students around the mental health. At the core though, again, the homework, the workload, am I correct? Was the real piece that was driving some of those stressors. So we'll continue to work through that. So I just wanna, action, in terms of action steps, I wanna be clear with our students. Their voices were heard. The focus group was informative. And just to let you know, we've, because when I talked with the students, they shared with me at the time that they had only met with a couple of classes, that there wasn't a huge number. They had at least two of their teachers who allowed them to go from room to room to do some surveying, and they had done some things with, I believe it was some kids who were in work-study if I remember correctly. One of the things that I shared with the kids that I kind of wanted to also hear from, I wanted to hear more than just the seniors' voices. So we were, we decided at that meeting, one of the things we talked about was doing a student survey to help also inform our decision-making. And we may have to do some surveying throughout the year, so you can't learn everything about the year just in one semester. So we kind of wanna see how it goes in the beginning of the year, how it goes in the end of the year. But we talked a little bit about surveying students from across the district. And we asked the students who were with us, the six students, now that I know there's a seventh student, we've asked at least from that group, would there be some people who would be interested in helping to create the survey and support us with it? And we have three students, those three of you here, if you just kind of raise your hand. Three of the students have said that yes, we'll help you to survey the other kids to gather some data. And then also, aside from that, and we were already working on it, I think you all started to do that work already together with the kids. Aside from that, one of the things that we're going to put into place is a student superintendent advisory task force. So we have a student senate here, if I remember correctly. What we wanna do is take students from different grade levels and have some ongoing conversation with them throughout the year to help inform our decision-making. So we're gonna be doing some meeting with kids throughout the year to just see how things are going and to learn from our students. I also want you to know that I shared with the students that we also have some other avenues that they can use to also help with voice. We, for example, we have school planning teams. And there are two students from the high school who are on those planning teams. When I shared it with the group, I'm not sure that they all knew that if I remember correctly. They didn't know of those students that are on the team. They know now. And we'll make sure that all of our students know that they can share. That is another avenue to share voice. And again, as I shared with the students, and I shared with you earlier, I want them to hear me loud and clear because we heard some things from people. Nothing is kept from the Board of Education. When you all shared with me your concern, when you came to me, immediately I did reach out to all of the nine board members and shared. And as, as we go throughout the year, we continue to share in public. We come and we share. And I, I wanna make sure that everybody knows what's happening because you are very important to us. And at our last meeting, I also shared with you that board that we're doing some things around scheduling. We're gonna be doing some things with our scheduling committee. We were able to find some resources. We have a gentleman coming in. And after aid, I think he's like maybe $1,000 once we get out of aid or less when you go through each of his days of pay. But when you look, excuse me for a moment, we have a committee, just so that you know, we have about seven, excuse me, we have about 19 people, I believe this. Is it 19 to 20 people? I believe it's 20?
I don't know that we have.
I think we have 19 up here. We, we've asked our teachers, by the way, around our schedule, just so the students know and the folks know here, we're gonna work on our schedule for a long-term fix. And so we've been working and partnering with our WTA membership leaders. And we have about 19 names here. We chose teachers from seven through 12 and from different areas. We wanted to make sure every content area was covered. And so we're gonna be working over the next, for the rest of this year and the next year around, how do we continue to make the schedule even better? So please know that our goal is we're always committed to continuing to work through the scheduling process. I know the time is getting late, so I'm almost there, students. Just final thoughts. Our goal is to always continue to engage with students. Transition is challenging. It's never easy. But we do believe that, and I'm confident, that we can and we will work through the process. Reacting and responding, we do need time to do that, right? So when you bring to us your concerns, you gotta give us some time to work through things. But if we can continue to talk, continue to work together, I'm confident that we can get concerns resolved. And really, we ask all of our community members, I wanna just share, if there's a concern, if there's an issue, please reach out to us. Come and start with us. Talk with your principals, talk with your teachers, talk with, you know, the superintendent, whomever it is. Start at the lowest level. We ask people to do that. And give us an opportunity to respond. We are dedicated to really trying to resolve concerns for our community. So we encourage all to use those protocols that we've put into place. And you can find that protocol, it looks like this, on our webpage. And at the top, actually, the whole piece around schedules with the protocol, it starts the whole protocol right at the top, okay? Okay.
Mathis, I just wanted to say something to the students that are here tonight. Mr. Pollan mentioned infancy, transition. You heard a lot of that.
I don't want you folks to go away ever thinking that you were, for another, lack of another word, like the guinea pigs or something like that, that your, your senior year was disrupted because of this. It is a change, and I understand that. You had three years of one-way, and now we've put you in a completely different bowl. And somebody has to be first somewhere. You will be somewhere in the real world, and your world will kind of be tipped upside down. It will develop adversity for you. We feel, we hear you. We feel, believe me, I hear it, and I understand. I remember when my girls were in fourth grade, it was the first year that the English ELA by the state was given, and I thought the world was coming to an end. So I understand it. And I don't want you to think that I think you're on your phone constantly. I was asking Mr. Pollan about study skills and resources that are offered here at school. So I wanna thank you very much for sitting through this and understanding. And we hear from Dr. Kelvin three times a day, four times a day sometimes. Whatever there's an issue, he is immediately letting us know that there's a problem. So I don't ever want you to think that he's hiding anything from us and that we are not here and that your administrative team is not here. You were very attentive, this group here, your eyes were on us, you paid attention. I wanna thank you very much. This was a lot to sit through. It's a lot to absorb. It's a lot for us to take home and take to heart. And thank you.
I think we should just give all our students a round of applause. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. So we're gonna just transition real quick. I just wanna make sure I shared with the board just a couple of things around the student member. We have two things left. The student member of the Board of Education. So we had a presentation last week from one of our students. I just wanted to share some legalities around that. I did check in with our lawyers. Just wanted to share with you some of the things that we've learned. So section 1804 of the education law provides that a central school district can have a student member of the board with the option, but it has to be done with the option of seeking voter approval on a proposition that includes an ex-official, a non-voting student member on the Board of Education. So in order to have a student member on the board, there has to be a piece that goes out to the public that has to be voted on. So the public has to approve that process. To be eligible, the student must be a senior by law at the high school level and must have at least attended the high school for at least two years prior to the selection. The other thing that we've learned is that a student member is entitled to sit with the, with board members at all times in public meetings of the board. They're also allowed to participate in all board hearings and meetings. However, by law, the student member is not allowed to vote, okay? I just wanna be clear. And you can certainly see the law, section 1804 subdivisions 12 and 12A. So they're not allowed to vote. They're not allowed to also attend and be a part of executive sessions. And they're not entitled to receive compensation of any form on school boards. The school board also must establish a process, by the way, for selecting the student member. And by doing so, they can use one of the following options. A student who has been duly elected as student president of the high school, they can, the board can choose to select. The board can choose to select a student duly elected by the student body. A student by the high school student government can be selected. A student selected by the high school principal. A student selected by the superintendent of schools. Or a student selected by majority vote of the school board. Those are the processes that are allowed through law. So something just to kind of think about if you were to establish, if you wanted to have that role. If the district does opt to have a student member, it may offer to voters, once every two years on the same date as the annual school district budget vote, a separate referendum to decide whether the school district shall continue to have a student member. Shall continue to have. Yes, it may. The law says may. I just recorded it right from the law. If the district does opt to have a student member, it may offer to voters once every two years. And then every two, correct. You're not required, but you, correct. You certainly could if you decide that you don't wanna do that again. Yes, the law says it may. So it's really up to the board, okay? And then we do know that there are some districts who do have student members on them. North Tonawanda is one that we've heard about, Eden Central Frontier, Canisorego, and Clyde Savannah closer to us, and then Baldwinsville. And board, what I am planning to do is kind of reach out to all of those places and see how that, see what the process is like, how is it working? And I plan to bring that information back to you all. And we'll look to see if there are other places that are out there. But these are some that we have heard of that do have student members. There are some other boards, by the way, they had them in the past, don't have them now. We'll reach out to that, and we'll just try to bring you a variety of information. Phil, I think you had a.
Is that the closest ones you could find? Could you get any further away?
So Clyde Savannah's not too far from us. That was the closest one, closest to us that we could find. Yes. Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, because this is a board thing, is it, should this be something that we have, Tim, reach out to their board presidents to find out the positives and negatives, not putting anything else on your plate?
So it certainly, you certainly can. I, you can certainly do that as well. I've already been gathering the data, so it's really up to the board. I've already been gathering the data, so it's really up to the board.
Everything you've got going on.
I'm okay.
To have one more thing.
We're good.
Yeah, well, let's make the.
One of my duties is to gather information and data for the board and to share that with you. Certainly, we've already, we're in the process of it, so, okay? You okay with that? Okay? We'll work together, whatever he wishes to do. So we'll bring that back. And Board, you can kind of go from wherever you wish to go to, okay?
All right, this time, I'd like to take a, we almost, let's take a break before this.
Sounds good.
If there's any students who are going to double dip tonight and get your paper signed, we can do that. People that left already, somehow, we'll get it signed for them. But come on up then, board member will sign them. Now they get them.
Carla.
All right, Board. So we're back, just wanted to kind of, as we end here, the report tonight, just wanted to share, we are back with more information around our capital project. The most updated scope of the project is complete, and we shared that with you in your packet. You had the whole piece there. And then, also, we wanted to just share the cost, total cost, I believe, is twelve, twelve point nine?
Two five.
Say it again, twelve point nine?
Twelve million, nine hundred twenty-five thousand.
There we go. Wanted to share that cost, what we're thinking now. And then, we also wanted to share, though, that one change, the piece around the community share of it, we talked about it being one point five million, and we're going to take that down a little bit to one point three nine five million. So in our reserve, we currently have that amount. So moving monies from another account to, over to that, we'd have to actually create another reserve and kind of do that. So we kind of started to think about, do we really need to, you know, totally go with the one point five, or if we did less down, will we still be able to have a zero percent tax impact? And after working with our fiscal advisors, we found that we could still have the zero tax, zero percent tax impact even at that amount. So we're back tonight with that information. We have samples of the seeker, the resolution, the proposal language, and updated debt service schedule as well for you. So I'm going to, these gentlemen, if you want to share about that information, please.
Yeah, as the superintendent said, there's just been the one revision on how much money is in the capital reserve before we were talking round numbers. But now that we're getting close and improving things, it's got, the numbers have to be exact. So that's why the change from one point five to one million, three ninety-five. And there's a couple of resolutions that, that are, you have samples tonight, that'll be on the next agenda. It's important to note that both the seeker and the funding resolution for the project can be done, voted on at the same meeting. The seeker has to be done first on the agenda, just a point of clarification. Dan and Superintendent are aware of that, Mrs. Reeves, Board Kirk also is aware of that, so we'll make sure that takes place. You got the scope items in there, so tonight, we ask for your approval on the dollar amount to present to the voters and the scope of the project. And we answer any questions you guys have.
Greg, this was, this was prepared on December the eleventh. Does the Federal Reserve action of yesterday or today change the band number at all?
No.
Okay.
No, because the update, this schedule, Ron, was just updated this week from fiscal advisors, so we still have enough room and air to, so it can be presented with a zero tax impact for the community.
It's a good question, the fact that, you know, the scheduling for capital project, we're at least two years away from borrowing for this, so who knows what's going to happen with rates, so that could have a trickle-down effect. These are amortized over fifteen years. But as of right now, in pre-referrendum stages, no, there's no effect.
There's just kind of a question, just in general, with just the way, the possible tax plan with the country, if that gets approved and just some of the, they're looking to kind of get rid of some of the regulations, would that speed up any of this?
No. Basically, our wait right now is if the voters approve the authorization for the project, it goes into more rigorous design phase, that's usually six months or so. And right now, the wait at Office of Facilities Planning is forty weeks to, you know, close to a year before you get a resolution from them. They're trying to do some creative things by outsourcing some of that review with local BOCs and trying to RFP different design services. But right now, that's more of the holdup than any kind of tax regulation.
So aside from that, the fiscal piece, we also have for you the resolution regarding the state environmental quality review, the seeker?
Seeker, seeker, yep.
Do you want to add on that at all?
I don't know how long all of you have been on the board, I'm just trying to get up to speed. You are required to do an environmental impact assessment of any time you do a capital project. A type-two analysis is a no declaration, which is essentially our bond counsel and our attorney saying that there's no detrimental environmental impact that would require further analysis. You usually get that when you add on to the envelope of the building, throw in addition, or if you're cutting down trees or interfering in any kind of wildlife situations. And as you see in the scope of this study, it's really kind of nuts-and-bolts, maintenance-oriented, so they didn't deem it worthy of further analysis.
And then there is, so we have also the, any other items I want to share about?
Yep, this is the funding resolution that Greg spoke to. Essentially, what this does is establish the time and place of the vote. Right now, we're targeting Tuesday, March sixth, from nine AM to nine PM in the high school gym. We would still utilize the Monroe County voting machines. I know there's some discussion about whether or not it had to be on a Tuesday, it doesn't, but we're going to do it just for the sake of clarity. That gives us enough time from the January eleventh date. You have to back out forty-five days for all of your legal postings and the seeker analysis and all public comment period. So it aligns well with that schedule. And that also speaks to the amount of the reserve and that we're actually allowed to do it. It's on the second page now, if you have a physical handout.
So these are just drafts for you to see, so before we get to our next meeting, January eleventh, you'll just kind of know what we're going to be looking for approval on. And we just wanted to make sure we got that out to all of you all. Any other questions about those items at all tonight, Board?
Greg, do you anticipate we have more funds? Because what's on the table right now is only.
The, yeah, the number, Carla, that is on there is, no, it's one million, three, it's a little bit over one million, three ninety-five.
That's what we have right now.
Correct.
That's the plan.
Correct, right, correct.
Between now and the time when you'd be spending, do you think we could have more?
Sure, there could, you know, the money will still be invested up until the time when the contractors come on site and you actually start paying people. But, you know, the interest rates are still pretty low, so our return on our investment dollars is still not what it's been in the past. So there could be a little bit more, but, you know, we just, we didn't want to use a number that was higher than what we currently have. We're trying to be conservative.
On the capital reserve, do we have to, I mean, we can only use what's in there, we can still use it, and we didn't have to revote, have the public re-vote on this. When do we have to, can we can add more funds to this? Can you clarify that?
So this reserve authorization is fully funded. We'll have to establish new capital reserve after this, obviously. We could do that during the May budget vote, we could do it at a later date. What we would have to decide as a team is what is a proper authorization for that fund? Typically, you look at a ten-year window. I believe the last one was a five million dollar authorization. It kind of aligns to your master planning, what do you think the next project's going to be ten years down the road? What do you think it's going to cost? What sort of capital reserve utilization do you need to make sure that that's a no-tax impact? So five to ten million dollars would probably be an appropriate capital reserve, but we have to look at that a little more closely.
So this is the last time we use the one that we have designated, this one?
Yes, yes, this will, this will close out the old one. And as long as the work being done lines up with the work that was stated in the proposition when it was created, and usually the wording is very flexible to make sure that you include all types of work that we would do, so you have the ability to use the money. You know, if it was something that wasn't in the wording, then it wouldn't be allowed. But we already checked into that, so we're outside. But this will close out the old one, and then, as Dan said, the district will have to make a determination, you know, how much the next one is. We've been talking about it for a couple of years. We actually talked about it when Mr. Carla Body was here, we decided to wait till Mathis got on board, and, you know, now we've been working on the plan. So I think now it'll start becoming a clearer picture for you guys.
Okay, Board. So we're now going to work on preparing the final resolutions and paperwork for the state. Information we're going to start sharing out through our district newsletter, our Facebook page, our local media as we start to move closer. And we're going to be looking again, as you heard, for a vote in early March. So we'll be publicizing quite a bit once we have everything finalized there in January. Okay? Well, good, all right. Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Greg. We appreciate your time. Okay, so tonight, we have some board business that we'll need to just have approved, the updated district authorization appointments. That's for Dan to be able to do all the signing off now that he is transferring into the role here. The capital project scope, revised uncollected tax reports. There is a resolution to establish the salary benefits for the non-supervising personnel, and then a resolution to establish salary and benefits for the PAC director. And then we have a settlement agreement as well that would need approval. The consent agenda, we look for approval tonight for the Treasurers' report for October thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. The personnel action, and then the board meeting minutes from November thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. We have a gift, I believe it's for a scholarship, if I remember correctly, and also a, make sure I got it right, dictionary that came from the, one hundred and seventy-five dictionaries from the Walworth, Ontario Rotary. And then lastly, just the Audit Committee meeting minutes for November twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen. We would look for approval, Board. Okay? And that is all that I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Also, Greg, we'd like to thank you for all your years of service to the district at this time, since that was your last report, and wish you well and really tired mint, that's what I said.
Thanks.
All right, at this time, we'll move through the action items on our agenda. I need a mo-
I need a motion to, I better put my glasses on so I can see this better. Update the district authorizations and appointments. Matt, second.